Good evening, welcome to the special meeting of the Needham Zoning Board of Appeals on a Wednesday. First on our agenda is the acceptance of the minutes from the July meeting. Have you all read the minutes?
I have.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I put a motion to approve the minutes from the July meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. I do want to also announce for everybody in the room and on Zoom that we are cable casting this live on the Needham channel and so you can watch these proceedings in the Needham channel or participate in Zoom. First on the agenda is the application of Douglas Sherman at 62 Kimball Street. Mr. Sherman?
Steven.
Please come join us. And this is an application for Doug Sherman. Douglas Sherman, he's applied for a special permit under 6.12 and other sections of the zoning bylaw to allow for an additional third car garage to properties at 62 Kimball Street in Needham and the single residence SRB zoning district. I've just introduced you, told your application, but introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Doug Sherman, I'm the general contractor for Julie and Chris Cox. They live at 62 Kimball Street where I'm doing a renovation slash addition on their house.
Okay, please, present your application.
My application is to add a third garage bay onto the house as part of a Phase Two of this project. When we originally applied for the permit, the bill inspectors what took note of the fact that the third garage bay was there and we couldn't have that in SRB without a special permit. But considering the homeowners are at their house for the summer in Connecticut, I'm trying to get Phase One done before they get back. So we continued with the project. We made the door smaller to get the permit and in the meantime, the bill inspector had told me to, you know, apply for this in the meantime. So, not trying to put the cart before the horse, I'm just trying to get Phase One so they can get back in the house and hopefully.
We appreciate when an applicant comes in looking for the special permit before they've completed the house and say, well, we built this house and want the special.
So I haven't started Phase Two yet and the garage foundation is just sitting there. I won't touch it until this meeting.
Got it. So, any questions on the application? It's pretty clear of what they're looking for. Is anybody in, I'm going to read for the public some comments on the application. So the planning board, the planning board did not meet before our zoning hearing in July where you were not able to attend. We saw you briefly on Zoom, I understand that. We continued it to this day. Did the ZB, did the planning board have comments?
They did, and they submitted them, they're in your, and they had no comment.
It just came through today, I saw.
Right, because they met last night.
Okay. Ah, here it is, the updated, no comment. All right. We had the Department of Public Health had no comments on that one, nothing to share. The police had no comments to share. Let's see. This is.
Engineering and fire.
Let's see. Who's Justin?
That is engineering.
Engineering had no comment, fire chief had no comment. So those are the comments from the departments.
And health and building.
Health and building?
The health department and the building department.
Would you give me the health department? Oh, here's Tara. I got that. So health, I think I said that earlier. Okay. So, there's no comments from the public. Anybody in the audience or on Zoom hear, opposed, support, or just want to comment on the application?
See if there's any hands raised, no hands raised from attendees?
Do you have any questions, members of the board?
Do you intend to put multiple lights in between all the doors? Have you gotten that far yet?
Yes, we have. It's, they're looking for this existing in between each door and we'll probably add a third next to the 10-foot door that we're going to be adding on.
And you understand the bylaw and the requirements for the special permit? You're not supposed to infiltrate other people's property with a light face downward?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Anybody else?
No.
No? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and we can deliberate.
Okay.
Comments?
I drove by into the corner, corner of Grant and Kimball, doesn't appear.
Looking pretty good, isn't it?
He's, we're supposed to be deliberating. You can only influence it in the wrong way.
Looks pretty bare bones right now. I don't think this has a detriment to the need for me to perform this maximum you are older. I'm generally, I'm generally in support.
Okay.
Yeah, I also drove by before the last round, similar observations. I don't see a problem with it.
So you're supportive of the application?
Support, supportive of the application.
I have no comments on the application, I'm in support of it, so it's.
I put a motion to approve the applicant's application for a special permit under 6.1.2 for 62 Kimball Street.
For? Okay, third.
Second, that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Once we issue the decision.
Yes.
All right, next up is the application of Greg Kassijian at 136 140 Hillside Avenue, and they've applied for a special permit pursuant to 14743524.23 and other applicable sections of the bylaw to permit the demolition and reconstruction of non-conforming two-family dwelling to be replaced by a new two-family structure. And the property is located in the single residence SRB zoning district. Mr. Junta, please identify yourself and who you represent, since I've just done that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So George Junta Jr. appearing tonight on behalf of the applicant, I know his name, Greg Kassijian, with respect to this two-family property at 136 140 Hillside Avenue. I believe Greg will actually be on the Zoom, he couldn't be here person tonight. So in some ways, this is a pretty straightforward demolition reconstruction of a lawful pre-existing non-conforming two-family. The property is shown as parcel 69 on sheet 95 of the assessor's map. It's located in the single residence B zoning district, immediately adjacent to the Hillside Avenue business district. So if you look at the property from the front, right to the right of it, that next property is in the Hillside Avenue business district. The lot has 10,027 square feet of area with 95 and 1/2 feet of frontage on Hillside Avenue. There is a two-family located to the rear which was actually just reconstructed in the last year plus, pursuant to a decision from this board that was issued about two years ago, over two years ago. There's a couple of the two families in the neighborhood. This is very much a mixed kind of neighborhood with an awful lot of two families and I think a three-family. You've got multi-units, a property next door that's seven or eight units, and then there's an apartment, there's a three-unit on the corner that was approved by variance from this board, and then there's an apartment building on the side of that. So you've got a bit of a higher density in the neighborhood. Currently, the property is occupied by an existing two-family dwelling that was built in 1860, well before zoning went into effect. The property, the house is non-conforming both as to its use for two-family purposes and also with respect to the left side yard setback. Now, the house is currently situated just over 12 feet from the sideline as opposed to the 14 feet that is currently required. So the use and the physical structure are both non-conforming. With respect to the use, there's a lot of, a lot of good, good evidence that it qualifies as a lawful pre-existing non-conforming two-family. I've put all that in the memo that I've submitted, but I'll just run through some of it.
Can you focus more on the use of it since the 1989?
Yes.
So you, occupancy as a two-family for all those years from 89 on?
Yep, okay, sure. Right, so in 1989, the property, the owner of the property came before the Board of Appeals and got a special permit to enclose an open porch that was in the back and basically make that living space as part of the house. As a part of that decision, the board found that the property qualified as a lawful pre-existing non-conforming two-family. So we've got a fixed determination as of 1989. Going forward, there is good evidence that shows that the property continued to be used as a two-family. We have, number one, the property continued to be taxed as a two-family and is currently taxed as a two-family. There were a couple of building permits that were pulled, although admittedly, they were in connection with the work done in 1989, but they show it as a two-family. Most importantly, I did do a summary of occupancy based on occupancy records, which I've submitted, and if you run through that, you will see that while there are two sort of gaps, basically, it is consistent all throughout that both units were occupied.
What were the years of the gaps?
So, the years of the gaps.
And I saw that, and I thought it was very well done. You have it at the end of your, not 89, 24, obviously.
Yeah, so it was 1996 and 1997, and then again, and then again, 2017, 2018. Now, interestingly, in 96 and 97, occupancy records actually indicate current occupant, which other years, there's no entry, so it would seem to imply that there was a belief that there was an occupant, just that the occupant wasn't identified, but I still call that out just because there was no name provided. Now, notwithstanding those two gaps, you also have a notarized affidavit from the current owner of the property, who's actually the son of the gentleman who owned it in 1989 that came before the board. And in his affidavit, he lays out the fact that when his father purchased the property in 89, it was a two-family, both units were occupied, that his father continued, that he continued to rent out the two units until he then moved in. The father then lived there for a period of time and then, and then kept the other unit rented, so both units were occupied. And then when the father moved out, he rented the unit he previously lived in.
Stop you for a second, are you saying 17 and 18, there's no records of a second occupant?
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you, sorry.
Yep, that's right. So, so from, from 1990 through 2009, John Rothschild lived at the property and then in one unit and rented the other unit. Brian Rothschild, his son, who is the current record owner, spent a good chunk of that time living at the property as well. So he's got personal knowledge of what went on at the property as well as sort of institutional knowledge from, you know, from general awareness. In 2009, John Rothschild moved out and then he moved away and he lived away for a while, but then in 2023, he moved back in. So now John Rothschild is living at the property again in one unit. Throughout that entire time period from 1989, when John Rothschild bought the property, came before the board, to today, property has consistently been, both units have consistently been used and occupied, and that's spelled out in Brian Rothschild's affidavit. So, you know, while there are these gaps in the occupancy records, the board's heard me say it, you've heard other attorneys say it, you've heard other people say it, the occupancy records, especially after like the 70s, are based entirely on voluntary submission of census reports, and especially when it comes to tenants, they don't always submit them, or if they submit them, they don't always get, you know, find their way to the right place. So we can only rely on those occupancy records so much. When you see a huge gap, obviously, that points to something that you need to evaluate further, but when you see a couple of years like this, it's just as easily could be that they just didn't send them in. It could be there was a different occupant in there during the time and they didn't bother because they, they were only there for a year.
It's amazing how depending upon the case, you rely on them or you don't rely on them. It's interesting. Just understand the next time you come in for that one, we're going to cite you.
Listen, I'll say, I always rely on them, but I only rely on them to an extent. And, and so one of the things I did too, by the way, and this was in my letter of July 31st, I also did a sort of quick internet search to see if I could find additional occupants listed. And in fact, I did find a few different people that do not appear in any of the occupancy records that are associated with the addresses having lived there. So I can't say for sure they lived there, but I suspect that maybe one or two of these people might have been there in these, during these periods of absence. So all in all, I think when you put the whole picture together, it's pretty clear that this property has continued to be used and occupied as a two-family since 1989.
Any questions on the 1989 determination of a two-family pre-existing non-conformity or the run from 89 to today?
Yeah, I guess, I was still kind of, when I was going through this with the gaps being what they were and, you know, the lack of reliability, as you point out, about the internet search and particularly like the years of occupancy that are revealed in internet search, right? You can tell maybe someone who lived there, but you don't necessarily know the years, how long, when they moved in, when they move out. Could there be an issue of abandonment? Can you talk about that, if the gaps during those years could constitute 24 months or more of discontinued use?
Yes, so, so the bylaw requires affirmative non-use of 24 months or more. And I would say that, that based on the totality of the evidence here, it does not appear that there's a, that there's a abandonment. You know, the fact that we have these gaps in the occupancy records, again, is one piece of evidence, but when you take it in connection with the personal knowledge of Brian Rothschild as set forth in his affidavit, in connection with the fact that there are other names associated with the property, although they're not tied to a year, a couple of the names do, the last names match, last names that are in the occupancy records, but a couple of them do not. So the ones that do not, presumably, you know, either they were totally unrelated, which is not common, but not impossible, but maybe they were there during that time period. In any event, considering that the two periods we have, we have gaps are two years, you know, you're sort of right at that 24 mark anyways. So I would say in this case, it's pretty safe. If we had, if there was a third year, then I think there's a bit more of a question. But where it's got to be 24 months or more, I think the fact that there's only, you know, two years of gaps, the gaps are only two years here and then several years later, two years, I think, together, everything points to it being occupied.
And are there leases or any other kind of documents that show who the occupants were, how long?
So the, so the Rothschilds, we're going to see if they could find leases, but a lot of that stuff is apparently gone. When John Rothschild moved out, he didn't keep any of his old stuff, I guess, and, and I hadn't heard back with respect to leases and quite frankly, given the, some, you know, that's, is the point of diminishing returns. And so when we had the affidavit from Brian Rothschild, I felt that was, that covered it sufficiently that we didn't have to really spend a bazillion hours digging to try and find old leases.
Anything else on that? Want to describe the project?
Yeah, okay. So it's pretty straightforward. The plan is to knock down the existing two-family and replace it with a new two-family, a two-and-a-half story dwelling. The new two-family will have a footprint of 1,932 square feet. That, it works out to a lot coverage of 17.9% pursuant to section 1.4.7. And then because you calculate lot coverage differently for section 4.2, for that section, it works out to 23.6%. As a result, the property complies with the lot coverage requirements. Section 1.4.7 imposes an 18% lot coverage limit, and section 4.2 imposes a 25% lot coverage limit, so it's under both of those, so it complies with the lot coverage. The proposed new house also complies with all other dimensional and density requirements, complies with setbacks, complies with floor area ratio requirement, so it's fully consistent with all that. There are also two single-car detached garages proposed, one detached garage for each unit. And I will point out, you'll get to this when you do the comments, the building inspector initially provided a letter questioning whether the garages should be included in the calculation of footprint. And I have to say, I met with him and we went through the bylaw and we looked at it, and the language of the bylaw, the way it's worded currently, is not the most clear. When the bylaw was amended in 2005, put in this whole framework about all the rules for reconstruction of two-families and a single-family zone, at that time, the bylaw was very clear that it didn't count detached garages as long as it was no more than one garage space per unit, and the detached garages were no more than a total of 575 square feet. Black and white, very clear. But in 2011, the bylaw was amended to specifically allow for tandem parking and to allow for two, you know, a space for each unit in the main building and then a space for each unit in detached buildings. And when they put the language in, they, they probably should have put an extra comma in and they, as a result, it's not entirely clear about the calculation. So I met with the building commissioner and upon review, I understand that he agrees with the interpretation of this case, that the detached garages do not get included. But, but, but there is that sort of bit of the bylaw that probably should be corrected.
And that was his August 13th letter, which I'll allude to later, but he took a second look at that, met with you, and agrees.
Yeah. You should also have as a part of your materials, some renderings that show, you know, graphically what the proposed house will look like. And I think, certainly to my eye, I think it looks very nice, very attractive, considering there is a bit larger two-family behind it, there are multiple units to the right of it, you know, this two-family sort of across the street diagonally, there's another two-family down the block, there's a two-family, two houses over. I think that this house fits in, this proposed replacement house will fit in well with the neighborhood. I think it's a very attractive, very lovely design. And basically, I think, you know, the gold standard is, the question is whether or not it's substantially more detrimental than the existing house, and I would submit that this proposed new house is not at all substantially more detrimental than the existing.
Thank you. Read some of the comments that we received. You just mentioned the building inspector, he submitted letters on August 5th and August 13th. On August 13th, he agreed that the proposal's compliant in, as is the request for a special permit. The planning board had no comment, the fire department had no comment, Board of Health had the typical demolition comments, pest control, stormwater law drainage, and then the same thing to Department of Public Works on the stormwater bylaw. I didn't see anything from the police department.
There was none.
Okay, no comments from the police department. So, before I open it up to the public or anybody on Zoom, do we have any questions for the application at this point? Okay. Anyone in the room wanting to speak for or against? If you would please come up, use that microphone on the right side, Mr. Junta. And you're speaking into the microphone, not for us to hear, but for the cable TV world to hear.
I'm Sam Hart, I live at 154 Hillside. My unit looks directly out onto this property. Having lived there since 2002, I suppose, certain level of frustration since I've lived there. We've had the building on the left-hand side of us torn down on Honeywell, we've had the building in back of us torn down and built. We've had, just had another unit, house in back of this one, torn down and rebuilt. So this is the deja vu, this is the end of it. They can't do anything more to us. I'm not going to argue about the building, it's, it's a big building on a small lot, but I suspect you've heard that before, so I'm not going to do it. My major concern is the property line, the trees on the property line. If somebody can answer my questions, this will be simple. According to the print I have out in front of me, which is something, there's going to be a tree in the back, that's, it was there now, I assume that's going to stay, it's on the print.
I would, I would expect so, but I would, I would actually ask Greg to chime in, should be on Zoom.
Or would you promote?
Greg, can I?
Yes.
I do know that the, the one tree forward of that would be coming out because you can see that's in the driveway.
Okay, then, okay, then we have some issues.
Let's hear from the builder. And he's promoted, but he's muted.
Yes. Greg, please unmute. There it goes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello? Hi.
Hi. So there was a question on the tree shown on the plot plan, right?
Yes. So, so Greg, this is, it's the tree, so there's two trees, one sort of in the back-right corner, off the back-right corner of the proposed new garage on the right, and then the other one is sort of forward of that, to the front kind of of that garage on the right. Are those, are either or both of those trees slated to be removed, or are they staying?
So the way we usually proceed with the, with the trees, we try to save all the mature trees as possible, as much as possible, as long as they don't, you know, obstruct the footprint of the house or on the way of the machinery, let's put it this way, or on a new driveways, as long as they don't, you know, hang over the new roof. Sometimes the, when you look at the old house, it looks perfectly fine. When the new house gets built, you kind of realize that the large branches kind of hang over the new house, and we try to remove either the branches or sometimes unfortunately we have to remove the, the whole tree. So yes, we don't cut all of them right away, we make a room for a footprint, and then we go as, basically, as needed, basically to answer your question.
They didn't answer very well.
So I think he's saying he doesn't know yet.
Yeah, okay, well, the problem I have.
Yeah, I don't know yet. We try to save as, as many as we can, but when a new house is erected, again, sometimes the branches or something hangs over that new roof, and technically, it's the insurance requirements that we take down all the large branches that hang over the new roof. And again, if that whole tree happened to be on the path of the new house, unfortunately, we're going to have to take it down as well.
Because we have three trees in the same area on our property, so if you're going to start digging in that area, you're going to affect the root systems on those trees, okay? So I'm, we're concerned about that. Those three, there are three right here in this area, okay? Then down lower on, 15 feet off of Hillside, there's a huge oak tree, which, and then there's one directly in back of me, which overhangs the property, and I'm really concerned this, that this tree here is going to be damaged heavily with the, with the putting in for the driveway, and, as well as this one. This one will probably survive since it's close enough to our, our property, so the root system is probably okay. I'm really worried about this one, not only will you're going to damage the root system, but you're then going to put asphalt over the whole area. So I'm concerned that that tree is going to be a problem.
Can you show us which, which one you're talking about? Is it on the, the one?
Yeah, on the right-hand side.
This one, kind of forward, closer to the street.
Yeah, yeah, this.
This one. Just wanted to make sure that we're talking about the same one, this, this one?
These, these and these, so we have trees here, here, and here, okay? They're on our property. Then there's a big tree, an oak tree right here, which is right on the property line, and then there's one down here, which is right on the property line. This one, I'm afraid, is going to be damaged badly because not only, we don't have much, we, we don't have.
We're, we're looking at this on Google Maps.
Has the lot been surveyed? Are there stakes in the ground?
Has the lot been surveyed?
Are there stakes in the ground on the property line?
I don't know. I have not seen, not that I know of.
Are any of the trees that you're talking about on your side of the fence?
Definitely on our side of the fence.
Okay, got it. You're just concerned about the roots? How many are on their side?
Roots, and then on top of that, he's going to put in a driveway. So he's going to essentially cover all of the area that is probably the watershed for the tree. This, this tree here. This tree down here probably can survive because we have luck. This is where our lawn is.
I don't think your trees are noted on this plan. I think the two trees that are delineated on this plan.
Yeah, the two trees belong to them, they're not on my.
These are trees on their side of the fence?
No, they're not on.
If there's additional trees on your side of the fence that we're concerned about? Okay, understood.
I'm worried about if, if he starts to take them down, so that's a, that's a major concern, particularly this one here. It's a big tree. We're not talking 18 inches, eight, two feet in diameter, so it's an oak.
The one that's on your side of the fence?
My side, yeah.
Okay. I'm just, you're pointing at the, at the plan and I don't think there's anything on the plan.
Yeah, yeah, you're not seeing our trees.
Got it, okay.
They're not there.
Got you.
So that's a concern of us.
You've lived there for 20 years?
Twenty, yeah, 2002.
Have you continuously seen multiple parties living in this property?
No, no, I, it was a lease, Jack was living there, he owns it, he was the owner. Jack was out west for a high percentage of the time, but there was a guy, there was a renter there. I don't know whether both units were rented, but just one was rented, I know. And then Jack moved back a couple of years ago, used to see him come down the street, nice guy, used to meet him in the senior center, so beyond that.
So, so we have a, an issue where the butter is concerned about removal of the trees, this happens. If the applicant wanted to do a single-family home, technically, the trees could be damaged as well, and you have an action. trees could be damaged as well, and you have an action against him for-
Yeah, we just spent $3,000 having them all trimmed, across the property, get them off our property. So, they're all in good shape. They're all healthy as hell. So, my concern, my concern is this one here.
I, I don't know, I don't know, you won't know until it happens, if there's a happen. And then, if it's damaging your trees, then you have an action against him. But if he did a single-family house, he could do the same thing.
Yeah. My only concern is that I know that, I'd like some, somebody to look at and say, all right, this is what's happening to this tree. What are the chances of this tree surviving? And I don't, and my, my guess is this one, the chances aren't very good.
And I just want to be clear, when you're pointing, you're talking about the tree that's not on these plans, that's on your property-
On my property.
And you're concerned that any action on his property by impacting the root system could take your perfectly healthy tree and potentially damage it?
Yes, yes. Nothing's wrong.
So, that's the request. So, how can we approach that? And if the answer is, yeah, I think the tree's going to die if we do this project, we have another issue. But I think he has the right to understand that, and perhaps not have to incur the cost of hiring an arborist.
Now, I'm certainly not anywhere near being a tree expert, but I certainly would think that putting in the driveway is going to be fundamentally different than if they were, if the house were closer. I mean, the house is 20 feet away. So, the excavation for the house is substantially away from the property line, and then it's going to be at least a quarter or two maybe, the tree. So, I think the real depth, deep excavation is far enough away that only that would, you know, just, obviously, you go down a little bit to do a driveway, but I don't know that that would necessar, how much that would necessarily do. I'm not, I'm far from an expert. The only thing, and I would ask maybe Greg to chime in, I mean, possibly, you know, one thing I could possibly do is maybe keep the driveway a foot or two off the line to try and minimize the impact. I don't know, Greg, if you want to comment to that, if that's something you'd be open to. I do think the one tree that's shown in the driveway area, that that's probably, that's going to have to come out. I mean, that's just-
Yeah, I agree with that.
I think the one in the back corner, Greg probably, you know, will use his best efforts to retain, but-
So, so, not to try to get into the private right of action that you might have or not have, the issue is, is there a way of assuring both prospectively that you'll, A, move the driveway over a little, if you can do it, number two, have an arborist come out and take a look at what a driveway here would do to that tree, or three, if you do impact the tree, that you're going to take care of it and replace the tree. Obviously, you're not going to get a mature tree like that, but something that would grow in some period of time if, if it's damaged, to avoid that unpleasant tree.
I would, I, I would say that all of these trees are on the north side of the property, okay? So, they don't do anything for our property. And I can't make a decision for the group of us that live there, but there is an option of taking that tree out, okay? In my book, okay? I'm not sure.
Are you in the front unit, or are you the unit, yeah? Which unit are you in?
I'm in unit one. I'm right on the corner.
You're right on the corner.
Right, right on the corner. Yeah, I'm, I'm right here.
So, you would rather it be removed than die because of this project?
Well, my problem is, if it dies, they're not going to be around. It's going to be three years down the pipe. And guess what? Who's going to have to deal with it? You know, the people owning the property now, or-
This is a condominium?
It's condominium. There's eight of us. There's eight units.
Here's, here's the resolution. If the condominium requests that the tree be removed, will the applicant pay for the removal of the tree? That's, I think, the simple way of it.
Straightforward. Greg, do you want to comment on that?
Absolutely. So, there are a couple of things. George, you said, you nailed it. The setbacks is 20 feet, and, you know, we'll be digging far away from the, hopefully far away from the root system. So, that's number one. And, yes, yeah, I, I mean, I live in town. I'm actually a neighbor. I'm five minutes away from there. I build in town, and for some reason, if that tree dies a year or two or three down the road, I have absolutely no problem removing it at, at my own cost. That's, that's absolutely not even an issue.
Greg, if they want you to remove it now, to sort of, as a proactive measure?
That's fine. Absolutely no problem. When I have the tree, tree guys over there, if they do want that removed, I just, I have a standard paper signed, you know, by the owner of the, you know, property, that he doesn't mind removing the tree, I'll be happy to do that for him as well. That's, no problem.
For you, okay?
Well, I, I think it's, it could very well be the preferred option from my standpoint.
Yeah, absolutely no problem.
Other people.
The tree doesn't do us any-
All right.
It's an offside, so.
So, a condition of if the abutter condominium association requests that the tree be removed prior to construction, that the applicant will pay to remove the tree?
Okay. Yeah, then I would also argue that if he's going to take out the trees along the this side, probably one of them would have to come out as well, because he's, he'll be damaging them. I, I think we ought to just sit down, you ought to come over and just talk, okay? Personally, you know?
That's absolutely no problem. You, I'll have my phone number, my cell phone number on the sign as soon as we install it, and you can talk to me in person any day.
Well, yeah, I, good. The only, the only other comment I would make is that the garage, you've got a garage going in. It's going to be five feet off the property line. It's just five feet, okay? There's no setback on a garage?
Five feet is the minimum setback.
Minimum, or garage? Uno.
As, as long as, as long as the garage is not more than 15 feet high. If it goes over 15 feet high, so like if it's one of these big barn garages, then it has to be set back the full amount. But if it's a, basically just a small, one-car garage with a, you know-
Then I would argue that maybe we ought to ask for some arborites or something to sort of block it off. That, that's going to be close to the, the end unit, number three.
There's going to be a white vinyl fence, six feet tall, all around the property.
A what?
A white vinyl fence.
White? What about the one we have? You're going to do that too?
I'm not sure what we have right now.
Okay. They have-
A wood stockade.
Yeah, we have a wooden fence here now.
Okay. So, let's, let's try to wrap this up. Two requirements. Are you going to move the driveway or over two feet? Is that possible?
Greg, can you move it?
Or does it really even matter?
Probably possible. I can't say for sure if it needs, well, if we're removing the tree, then-
I agree.
What's the point of moving driveway?
Close condition. If the condominium association requests the removal of the tree prior to construction, the applicant will remove the tree at his cost. If they decide not to remove the tree now, and it is injured or damaged in the future, he will pay for the cost. And he will try to save other trees, preserve other trees, or remove other trees after a dialogue with the abutting condo association. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Work for you?
Yeah, I, yeah. I have no problem with the building. The building, anything's an improvement versus what's there, okay? I mean, it's too high, it's too big, it's too small.
You're a qualified, you're qualified support.
I have my qualified support, you know?
Thank you very much.
So, therefore, yeah, the trees are the issue.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyway.
Anyone else in Zoom, on Zoom, or in the room interested in this application?
We have, one hand's raised, Adam Bernstein.
He's in, too. He's next to me.
Okay. Mr. Bernstein?
Hello?
Hello.
Adam, I'm Sam's neighbor. I'm actually looking at the property in question right now, because it's outside of my window. So, I'm, I'm interested in first clarifying what we said about the fence, and then secondly, concern is drainage, especially if a paved driveway is going to be put down right, right next to our property. How will water drain from the driveway, and which direction? So, yes, thank you.
Mr. Junta, or-
So, yep. So, I can, so with, with respect to the fence, I think I'll just repeat what Greg indicated, which is that the property is going to have a six-foot white vinyl fence all around the perimeter. So, that'll be along the common property line with the condominiums there at the corner.
Does that mean-
As far as drainage goes-
Does that mean removal of the current fence that's on the line there?
No, that would be, so they'll, they'll wind up being-
Two fences back to back?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I, I do expect that, you know, you all will probably have communications with Greg, and you'll have some discussions. And sometimes when those discussions take place, sometimes a fence doesn't get put in, or another fence gets removed and gets replaced. You can work that out. But I've also seen many instances where you have two fences back to back. It's kind of the old Robert Frost, good fences make good neighbors. So, with respect to drainage, as a part of the town identity requirements, you have to, any developer now has to provide a certain amount of drainage infiltration. So, the, basically, the water from the roof of the house is going to get put into drywells and get put back into the ground. So, that will reduce the total amount of drainage from the lot generally. Right now, everything that falls on the roof, everything that falls on the property, basically sheds off, and then it's going to go however the, the ground is sloped. So, the water from the roof on the house will now go into the ground and will not be flowing across in any direction. The driveways generally are pitched to the street, and the idea is so the water that falls on the driveway flows down the driveway to the street, and then into the gutter, and then follows the gutter to wherever the drainage, the drain is in the street.
So, between the driveway and our property, there's going to be some area of drainage? The area of, area of land that water will drain down into?
There should not be. It should be, the driveway should drain out to the street.
Okay.
And, and there shouldn't be, I mean, there's no drainage structure. There's no, there's nothing that should, should shed water onto your property that, that, you know, in any meaningful way more than whatever is now.
The town went raining into the street. I thought that was part of the stormwater situation we're dealing with in town.
So, this is, so driveways are generally, and pretty much throughout the town, driveways are generally sloped so that the water pitches into the street. But a lot of properties, when they're, prior to development, they may have other water that's going into the street as well. By requiring the roof runoff to get put into the ground with the infiltration, that removes a huge amount of the water. So, even though they still have water coming from the driveway going into the street, the net amount going into the street gets reduced.
This is a town bylaw that's required. When they go in for their building permit, this is what they have to do.
I'm a town meeting member, so if we get involved, there's been a lot of discussion like that.
Yep, absolutely. And that's why that bylaw was adopted.
Anyway, okay.
Yep. So, so, the only issue that I want to present is you're going to have your fence, which is a stockade fence, and the developer has his plans for a white fence. So, therefore, at some point, you're talking about trees, you should talk about fences with them.
Yeah, because we just put a brand new fence in there.
Yep.
And we were going to extend it all the way down.
So, you should talk to him about fences, and how, how it fits in, and how the neighborhood looks, but it's not going to be part of our decision?
The squirrel is like wood.
All right. So, anybody else have any comments, questions?
There are no other hands raised.
Anybody have questions on the board before I close the public hearing, and we can deliberate? All right, the public hearing is deemed closed, and we shall deliberate. Thoughts, comments on the application, plans, some of the conditions we've discussed about trees, fencing, drainage? No one seems to have a problem with the project itself. It's just these sort of accoutrements.
Certainly good to hear that there was some, some support, maybe qualified, but some support for the project going forward, that any replacement would be a good replacement. So, pending the, you know, issues around trees and fences. I think overall, the project seemed okay to me. I would feel a little bit better having something more concrete about the continuous use as a two-family. I certainly understand, George, what you're saying about there being a lack of consistent evidence for that long of a stretch. And I know in previous cases, there's been a discussion of which way do you prove? Do you have to prove the positive, prove the negative? And I'm not sure. Maybe John, what you think about that?
So, so, my perspective is, I think he's presented sufficient evidence that there was not abandonment. I've seen many applications where it's really clear, and there's no indication of for 15 years who's been here, and someone submits an affidavit that there was two things. I think Mr. Junta has done a remarkable job presenting it and closing it to a window. So, you have a two-year span. We don't know if that, we know it's not more than 24 months. We don't know if it's 18 months. We don't know if it's 16 months. We don't know if it's half of 17 and half of 18. It could be one year. We just don't have the record. But you, you see, with an affidavit was submitted, and I appreciate that, with the building permits, with the assessment, with the taxes, and with a detailed analysis of who lived there for all these years, I don't see substantial evidence that it was abandoned. And no one has presented any contrary arguments to present it was abandoned. There's no one really opposed to the conformity. In 1989, they determined it was non-conforming. So, that brings us up 89. So, I don't see anything that presents me that it was abandoned under the bylaw. But that's just that issue. What are you, your thoughts on the-
Yeah, I think if there was a third year of a gap, I'd have an issue, but seeing that there's a maximum two-year gap, all those records suck. The fact that it's got two street addresses, and the fact that it's surrounded by two families, I mean, I think that anybody that would have occupied it would have been renting out another unit. I pulled up the site plan for the condo next door. It's unclear. There's no fence delineated in the site plan. That wooden fence there appears to be locust. If I were the developer, I matched the renderings that he provided, which do not show pavement going all the way there, because I think that'll make neighbors happy for both the root systems of the trees, maybe some drainage assistance, whatnot there. And I think it'll look prettier than just concrete going all the way there. And I probably would not erect a white vinyl fence, abutting a nice wooden stockade fence. I'd probably line that entire wall up with some beautiful arborite, but I'm not the lawyer.
Your aesthetic design, I totally agree with you. I think the developer should move the driveway over a little bit. I think, too, abutting fences is ugly, but I'm not a planner, so I, I think you should work with the, the Neighborhood and Condo Association, and take down what the trees that they want. That will be what I think the condition will be. So, I'm supportive of the application. I think you presented reasonable evidence that it was continued and not abandoned. It looks like a very nice design, and according to the abutter, this is going to be the last project impacting people with construction in that neighborhood for a while. Any other thoughts, comments? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll put a motion forward to approve the applicant's application for special permit pursuant to 1474352 and 423 and any other applicable sections to permit the demolition and reconstruction of the non-conforming two-family building to be replaced by a new two-family building.
Pursuant to the plans filed with the application, and any conditions?
I would like the condition to be that there's no driveway on the right side setback all the way to the property.
How far back?
At least two feet, subject to discussions with the neighbors, the building inspector.
Does that work? You don't, you don't know what you're dealing with in the abstract?
I, I mean, I, I think it makes sense, but-
20-foot setback, so.
Yeah, there's, there's, it appears that there's enough room to, to do that.
Okay. And that, the tree condition, do you want to add the tree condition, which is-
Oh, really?
You have to. That's your motion. Sorry.
That the applicant agrees to remove the neighbors' tree or trees pursuant to their discussion, approval, desire, pre or post construction.
At the developer's cost?
At the applicant's cost.
All right.
I'll sum it up, that if the neighbors, the condo association doesn't reach the agreement to remove the trees, and subsequently, the roots are damaged, that he would pay for it at a later cost.
So, I'm in the-
Okay, we have a motion. Do you have a second to motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. All right, thank you. And meet with the neighbors, discuss fences and trees, and minimize the impact during construction. Thank you.
What?
It's you. I didn't know if it was me. You're encroaching.
Our next application is at 10 Riverside Street, Arthur and Anna Deitch, seek a Author Anna Deitch, seek a special permit pursuant to section 3.21 of the zoning bylaw for a private school, as well as a special permit pursuant to section 5.115 waiving strict adherence with the off-street parking requirements of section 5.12 required parking and 5.13 parking plan and design requirements. Another applicable section of the bylaw to permit art instruction at the residential property. The property is located in the general residence zoning district. Please speak into the microphone so everybody can hear you on cable TV and, uh, please introduce yourself. Who are you, where do you live, and what is your, uh, position in this application?
My name is Anna Deitch, also known as Anna Starkova. I'm an artist, it's Anna Starkova, that's my maiden name and I use it as my business name as well. And, uh, I have been living in Needham already since 2014, previously in Newton. And, um, I'm an artist, so I, um, really like art and I like to share art with kids and with adults.
Okay, and you are?
I am George Junta Jr., I'm the attorney, uh, representing, did I just, this evening? On this application.
Mr. Junta, please explain the application.
Sure, so, uh, as indicated, this is for property at 10 Riverside Street. It is parcel 44 on sheet 73 of the assessor's map, located in the general residence district. This is the very first property in the district, so it's actually, uh, immediately adjacent to the Highland Commercial 128 zoning district. And it is, consists of 2,955 square feet of area with 50 feet of frontage on Riverside Street. The property, um, if you're looking at the property from the front, right to the left of it is the backside of Cookies by Design, which is a business that fronts on Highland Avenue. Sort of diagonally across the street is the Frank Webb showroom. That's a, that property goes a little bit deeper, so it's kind of slightly diagonally across the street. That, that business has a, they front on Highland Avenue as well. Uh, the property is currently occupied by an existing two-and-a-half-story, single-family residential house. The house is lawful for existing non-conforming with respect to front yard setback. And in, um, the house was built in 1925 and in 2018, a decent addition was put on the back and a second story was added pursuant to a special permit issued by this board for that addition and second story. So as Anna mentioned, she's an artist, uh, and is passionate about art. She also has two kids and she, as a mother, is well aware of the importance and the role of art in the lives of children. And she has, uh, has won awards, um, and has her, has had her work exhibited in exhibitions throughout New England as well as in New York City. She has, uh, done some, some art, she's done a, a bit of art instruction for a while now. She did some art instruction online, she's also done art instruction in person, and for a while she was doing art instruction at the house. That's how this all kind of comes before you. Apparently, somebody filed an anonymous complaint with the building commissioner, uh, and the building commissioner sent out a letter. That's, then I got involved, I had some communications, some conversations with the building commissioner because the nature of the activity to me kind of overlaps a little bit with like a home occupation. You know, it's not a real school in the sense of what you would usually think of for a school. So I had a little bit of back and forth with the building commissioner, at the end of all of that, it was determined that yes, all right, this, because it involves instruction, it would qualify as a school and therefore requires a special permit. So that's why we're here before you this evening, is to seek a special permit for the art instruction in the home. Uh, and then as a side note with that, it's also a special permit to waive strict adherence with the off-street parking requirements, both in terms of number of spaces and design. We'll get into that in a little bit. So with respect to the instruction, Anna is the only teacher, she's the only staff, so basically she is it, she does the whole thing. So it's just, just her as the only staff member. Classes are offered for up to five students, so five students is the maximum, but that doesn't mean there will always be five students in a class. Could be just one student, uh, could be two, could be whatever, but no more than five at any given time. Classes, uh, are going to be proposed primarily to be offered during the school year. Although during the summer, there will also be camps that will be offered. Each camp will be a week long, basically five days long, and there will be three of those. During the school year, classes will primarily be evenings, well, late afternoon, evenings and weekends. And there was a schedule that was provided in the, that I put in the memo that I provided you with. But basically to reiterate, the proposal is for classes Wednesdays, 6:30 to 7:30 PM. Thursdays, 4:00 to 6:15 PM. Fridays, 4:00 to 6:15 PM. And Saturdays, 10:00 AM to 4:15 PM. So generally, sort of, you know, not, uh, working hours during the day.
May I ask you a question? What type of art?
Sorry?
What type of art?
Fine art, so painting, drawing, graphics, mainly with acrylics, pencils, watercolors. But sometimes we do some crafts as well, like for holidays.
So classes during the school year would be 45 minutes long and there would be a 15-minute window between classes to allow for sufficient time for pickup and drop-off. Speaking of pickup and drop-off, the, the students will be, uh, children aged six to 15. So there won't be anybody driving, everybody will be picked up and dropped off. Hence why you've got this 15-minute break to make sure that there's not a chaos of multiple people coming all at once. The summer sessions, the five-day camp sessions, students will be able to do either half-day or full-day. Half-day session is 9:30 to noon and the full day is 9:30 to 4:00. Drop-off for the summer sessions is a half-hour window between 9:00 and 9:30 in the morning. So the special, so even though there's only five students and it's in the house and Anna lives in the house, it requires a special permit, so that's.
Excuse me, just, um, in your memo, I didn't see the hours and I didn't take down the summer hours.
So there is a, there's a schedule.
Is it in the schedule?
Under the matrix, the table?
Oh, for the camp.
Yeah, for the camps.
Oh, it's, it's, yeah, it's spelled out in the text, actually, for the.
9:30 to 4:00.
9:00 to 4:00?
Yeah, 9:30 to 4:00, yeah.
Okay, got it.
So the drop, drop-off is 9:00 to 9:30 AM, but the actual session is 9:30 to 4:00?
And some are for half-day only from like to, until 12:00.
Right.
So, uh, so Anna will be, needs a special permit for the use, I think that's pretty straightforward. The bylaw says the criteria for that is basically what's laid out in the section and, as with most use special permits, there's no criteria in the section. So basically, it's just, it's sort of a reasonableness standard. With respect to parking, let's talk about that a little bit. So I put in for a waiver both from the number of spaces as well as the design requirements, but it's my belief that probably a waiver from the number of spaces is not technically required. The reason for that is, even though there's no category laid out in the bylaw, uh, this board has considered many uses that are substantially similar to maybe a little bit less similar, but all in the same general category of after-school, uh, sort of instruction, tutoring, dance classes and so on. And all of those uses collectively have all been subject to the same parking standard, which is one parking space per staff, one parking space for every five students. In this case, maximum of five students is one parking space. And then one staff is two parking, is a second parking space. So only two parking spaces are required. As you can see from the plot plan and the, more importantly, the photos that were provided, there is a driveway that has two spaces. So there are technically two spaces on property, there's also an on-street sort of space in front of the house as well, which would be a third space. But where there are two spaces on property and only two spaces are required, uh, it seems to me that that means that there actually is a sufficient number of spaces provided. So I don't actually think as a technical matter that the number of spaces is required, but I applied for it just to be safe. And in any event, we do need a special permit to waive strict adherence with the design requirement. Because obviously, the driveway is, was laid out in, you know, was basically formulated as a typical residential driveway. So it does not comply with several of the design requirements that would normally be applicable to commercial driveway, uh, commercial parking. Such as, you know, minimum one-foot candle illumination, uh, the, the size of parking spaces. I think maybe they technically complies with that, but I can't 100% verify that, so I'll, I'll say, I'll add that in. But more importantly, layout of spaces, the bylaw has a requirement at section 5.1.3H. You're not supposed to have to move any car to get to any space where this is set out like a residential driveway, it's tandem. So, you know, you'd have to move the front car to get to the rear car, although the rear car would presumably be Anna's car, so that would be your staff car. So you wouldn't have to, you know, worry about that, uh, in a, in a practical sense. But per the bylaw, it doesn't comply with that requirement. Then, uh, the bylaw requires that the parking be set back a minimum of 10 feet from the street, four feet from the sideline and five feet from the house, five feet from the structure. It doesn't comply with any of those. And last, uh, those setbacks are supposed to be landscaped areas. So even if we comply with the number of spaces, we need a design, a design waiver with respect to the, the existing parking, the design requirements.
Got you.
But with that said, I mean, this is very much a small-scale, in the vein of a home occupation type thing. You know, this is not, this is unlike some of the other private school special permit applications the board has reviewed where you've got, you know, 20 and 30 students and it's a full-on thing, this is much smaller scale. I will point out that the studio where the art classes are provided is on the lower level of the house and there is a separate door on the side and it happens to be on the left side if you're looking at it from the front, which basically means that that door faces the back of Cookies by Design. So it's basically on the commercial side of the house. So there's a little, nice little pathway that goes up to that door. So it's, you know, the, the door is not on the residential side, it's actually on the commercial side. So even the way it's laid out, the, the minimal use, layout of the property, the fact that there's parking provided, um, to me, this use qualifies for the special permits, both for use and for parking.
Thank you. Questions?
I guess since this business has already been in operation and you have the experience dealing with parking, what is your experience with the parking, is it sufficient to people, because it looks like, based on the photos, that the parking is kind of at the rear of the property and then someone has to walk in, their kid through, and going around through the side entrance. So the entrance is kind of further from the parking than the street parking. Do you find that most people just use the street parking rather than use that spot?
They, uh, usually use both, right? If the, uh, in front of our house, two cars actually get, if they, uh, park tight, right, they can, we can get two, uh, cars in front of the house. So usually if they're both at the same time parked, right, they would use, uh, the driveway next to my house. So, um, I haven't had, um, like anyone, and I usually always put in writing and I have a notice, uh, in my studio about parking, not to block any cars, not to park in the commercial spaces as well, like next, next to our houses, right? So, um, maybe sometimes people use the street parking as well, just a little bit further away. But I have never heard any complaints.
Well, I think the building inspector said that an abutter complained, the building inspector specifically about parking. So I don't know if you're prepared to that or not, that's, how, when did you start doing this in your, in your home?
Well, I mostly started, when I started, I started with private classes. Like many years ago, I started with private classes, actually going to houses, uh, to people's houses. When I opened the studio, it was four years ago, like pandemic, kind of after pandemic. And, uh, I had like one, two, three kids, mostly siblings, because nobody wanted to.
So it appears the building inspector cited you for violating his rules in November of this past year, so less than a year ago. I guess the question is, you know, was there growth between?
Last year, last year I started because of the increase in interest of my, uh, my kids' friends wanted to join and, uh, their siblings wanted to join, because of the growth of this interest, I offered multiple days, more days and times. But I wanted to keep the number of students very, like, minimum to minimum, right, not, not too big. So I just offered more time and.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm not sure exactly who was the complaint, FW Web and Mogan is the most recent, like, neighbor. All the other ones have kind of been the same on our street, either they've been renters or FW Web because it's so close to us. We think maybe, um, says something, but we don't know.
Yeah, no, I don't think it matters who the, the building inspector, all I have is a letter from the building inspector to us. It says, "And an abutter complained specifically about parking." So I'm trying to piece when you started this and if there was some type of a catalyst that led to more parking, since one of the things we're going to make our decision on pertains to parking. And I appreciate the fact that we have a two-car ten-man driveway, we also have two adults here, I presume they have two cars, I don't know what you do for work if you're not home. But with classes in the evening hours, the logic of, you have, only have one car as a house?
Only one, no, we have two cars, but he is at, uh, when, um.
They do a lot of night shifts, so they're not even home.
Got it, I appreciate that, okay. And from a safety standard, like are there multiple egresses out of your basement? And, like, I'm just trying to figure out if you have multiple kids in there. All I saw was that picture with two little.
Well, why don't I read some of the records from the people who inspect these things? So you've heard from the building inspector, um, uh, his letter to cease and desist was in November. And on August 4th, he wrote a letter that, uh, the board should be aware that this office received a complaint. The complaint made us aware the business existed and the primary concern seemed to be parking. After a brief investigation, including review of the website and class schedule, um, I've had several conversations with Attorney Junta and have heard that's since the dating resulting of this appeal. So I don't see that the building inspector supports it. He's talking about an appeal rather than an application for a permit and a waiver. So did you see his August 4th letter?
I, I did, I actually thought he, uh.
He says that he has no objection to the proposal.
Right. And a special permit is required. But, okay, fine, resolved, police have no issues, so that'd be parking, um, and traffic. Board of Health, uh, has comments, uh, on the camp style. Our classes, the owner, will need to contact Public Health Division nurses to get a copy of a camp permit application. So camp, you mentioned camp several times, we're now into the end of the summer. But camps are different, they're regulated differently, so when you call something a camp rather than a school, you get into a different area. So you may want to guide your, uh, clients on the camp, uh, issue, but the Board of Health has picked that up. And I presume the camp will be vacations or summer next year. And then there's all sorts of permits and, so you should discuss this with the, uh, Public Health Division. So I presume they'll, will see that there's a lavatory for the children, there's two means of egress, uh, for safety. The planning board had no comment whatsoever. The fire department agrees with the building commissioner, which is always good, so that satisfies one of your concerns. And those are the, uh, departmental, uh, comments on the application. Want to address any of those, camp, school, fire, police, anything?
I, I think, I think most of them are, you know, they're pretty straightforward, they, um, uh, none of them objected and none of them had any real substantive comment. As far as the, the camp issue with Board of Health, we'll probably have to flush that out a little bit.
Yep, yep.
But, um, but I think that's something, you know, we'll do sort of a separate matter.
I, I was just confused by the building commissioner's discussion of an appeal. And I didn't see this as an appeal, I saw this as an application, so we'll take note of that. Anyone in the room here to support, oppose, or comment on the application? Seeing none, uh, we'll go out to the internet and see if anybody is on Zoom.
There are no hands raised among the attendees.
Hey, at that point, I'll close the public hearing and we can deliberate. So, uh, I asked you to deliberate first and comment, why don't we go to Nick? Nick, your comments, thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, it's clearly a unique situation, because I couldn't, I've been trying to figure out if it's really a school or not a school. It seems like it's.
That is the question.
It seems like it's evolved into a school and you're here in front of me saying it's a school. So if you're going to tell me it's a school, then I'm going to give you the same kind of logic that we've had with all these other kind of school-like places. And I don't think we've ever done a school, albeit a small school.
And I don't think we've ever done a school, albeit a small school for four or five kids in the basement of a home before. It's usually a basement of a church, a basement of an office building, something along those lines. Clearly, somebody has a concern about parking. I understand your logic, that we've one for staff, one for up to five kids, but the only fact that we have is that somebody complained with respect to parking. There's some street parking there, guy to the left, the cookie place, has like two garages, if I remember correctly, or something like that. Yeah, two garages there, it's peculiar.
Good cookies, though.
Never have.
You should bring some.
I could be convinced either way, but, I mean, it's a good thing that nobody else is here complaining right now, because if somebody was complaining, I'd be swaying another way, to be honest with you.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments.
I don't know if you wanted to say something in response, raise your hand here.
Because by design, there are also two floors that are occupied as well above, so there are renters there as well, so they have also to park somewhere. They do park along the street, our street. So there are some cars always on our, on our street, parked on the street.
I think that, I see your point, Nick, certainly about, you know, the consideration of the school and the, the space itself, it doesn't seem like that was the issue that whoever complained complained about. Certainly, it seems that there's, you know, parents signing up their kids for this business that don't seem to be concerned. And, you know, if the fire, the building commissioner didn't point that out as a concern about the space itself, I'm not sure if we need to deliberate it very much. The parking, I don't know if it was considered whether there was any alternatives or if any additional parking is necessary, or if it was just a one-time neighbor complaint. These situations tend to arise between businesses, a lot of times, our neighbors complaining about other neighbors. So maybe it was just a one-off. Be curious, I guess, to know if that was resolved ultimately. I don't know that we know that. Right. A person complained, they were appeased, whatever the violation, maybe someone parked in their driveway one time, it hasn't happened since, you know, maybe you put up a sign, maybe that's helped, you know, it could be a non-issue as well. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, so I would probably agree that it's more of a home office profession, arts and crafts, fine arts in your home. Building commissioner received a complaint. I'm not going to give any more credibility to the complaint because it was to the building commissioner who investigated it, made it determine, issued a cease and desist, you met with him, he said you need to apply for this special permit. So that's the process we do to legitimize what your home art studio has become. It's gone from maybe one or two people in your basement to something a little bit more. It seems really modest to me. It's an attractive setup from the pictures I've seen. The area is residential bordering on commercial, there's commercial right next door to you with people coming in and picking their orders up and so on. And so I'm supportive of your application, I'm not concerned about it. These are little kids who are dropped off by their parents, it's a minimal use, you're still living there, you're doing a service that our public schools are probably not doing anymore, so I support that. So there's nothing that really bothers, I think the person in the neighborhood or in a butter or resident or commercial tenant filed a complaint, and it was addressed through the municipal process, through the building commissioner, and he has no objection to the special permit. No one is here supporting your application, which is okay, but no one's opposing your application. And based on that, I'm supportive of the application. So that's where I am. And if you're not persuading, he's the person that has to persuade you, not me.
I'm not, like, you far more eloquently conveyed kind of the sentiment of where I was getting, right? Which is like, I don't, this doesn't feel like a school to me, it doesn't taste like a school to me. It tastes like somebody just ruins, like, tastes more like a childcare, like, a home daycare.
Surprising as a knot, when I was a child, I went to a person's basement and did wood shop. I was horrible at it.
You're really dating yourself right now.
But I really made nice racing cars. So that was about nine or 10 kids in a basement, and it was, it was fine, and we all survived. So anyway, I think you're doing a wonderful service, and so that's my feeling, but only one vote.
Well, listen, I don't disagree with the fact that there's nobody here to oppose, I don't disagree with the fact that our town zoning official is now in support, so I can be easily swayed. So I put two motions on the table today.
I'll put a, thank you for my motion, it's approved. So unless you deliberate anymore, I'm comfortable.
I'm fine, but I think we've deliberated.
Perfect, so I'll move to grant the special permit pursuant to section 3.2.1 of the union zoning bylaws for a private school, as well as a special permit pursuant to sections 5.1.1.5 waiving strict adherence with the off-street parking requirements of section 5.1.2 and 5.1.3 and any other applicable section of the zoning bylaw to permit the art instruction at the residential property.
I'm going to provide two findings that should be, we were making a determination that there are two required spaces on premises. The hours of operation are specified in your application, and we don't have to really rate those, and the number of students are capped, maximum of five in any time, and one instructor, that being the applicant. So that was my amendment to your motion.
Yes, I approve your amendment of my motion.
I'll side with that motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, 3-0, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yep. Anything else before the zoning board of appeals this evening, Daphne?
No, that's it.
At this point, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye, we're adjourned.
What are we meeting next?
We're meeting September 8.
We'll have to bring you Cookies by Design next week.
Make some art for the walls over here.
The art would be better than the cookies.
My wife is super talented, she can do it all.
Congratulations.